Okay, one, two, three, four. Got anybody here? All right. So I will call us back to order with apologies for the fact that we were about 10 minutes late. We were deep in discussion of important matters. Sorry about the delays. First of all, we need to read us back into open session. Does somebody have a copy of the closed meeting certification motion?
I've got it.
Okay.
All right. I move that the city council members certified by a recorded vote that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed meeting.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Thomas, you take the vote, please.
Counselor McGill?
Here.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Uh, yes. We still got a feedback issue.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So the motion passes, and we are now back in open session. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. This has been a very difficult week for a lot of reasons, and the one aspect of the moment of silence is a recognition of some of those difficulties. The most obvious one, of course, is the deaths of the three football players shot last Sunday night. And I want to reflect just very briefly on one matter that has really been sort of uppermost in my mind as I've reflected on it all, from a governmental perspective, not so much from a human perspective. From a governmental perspective, is the recognition that we are all one community, that the city of Charlottesville is not separate from the University of Virginia or from Albemarle County, that as government entities, we work together. As human beings, we work together. About a third of the people at the university live and work in, live in the city of Charlottesville, probably more than, about half probably are in Albemarle County. Probably half of the people in Charlottesville have some tie to the University of Virginia in some way, either as students, or faculty, or staff, or alumni, or parents of students, or whatever. And it's simply not possible for us to say that what happens in the county or what happens at the university is not deeply involving us. I'll also note that I got a letter from the town of Blacksburg's mayor, Leslie Hager Smith, on November 15th. Dear Mayor Snook, on behalf of the town of Blacksburg, I want to share our most sincere condolences on the senseless violence your town and university suffered Sunday night. A widening community of citizens knows the shock and pain of losing precious and promising lives to violence, but the keenness of the hurt our town is experiencing springs from the affinity we feel for you as a college community. Students come to us in hope, seeking refuge, growth, and guidance for their lives. It is the saddest of turns that sees such young people deprived of all. The citizens and students of Blacksburg are bereaved with you and with the families of DeShawn Perry, Lavelle Davis, Jr., and Devin Chandler. We are holding you in our thoughts. Signed, Leslie Hager Smith, Mayor of Town of Blacksburg. And I wrote her a nice note to respond to her and appreciating her expression of sentiments. This is certainly, this is three lives. Blacksburg, they're involving 30-plus lives. They're both terrible tragedies, and we have a lot that we're continuing to recover from. And I just, it's been a tough week. Other councilors have any comments you want to make?
Yes, I'd just like to chime in as well, seeing and I just left a conference in Kansas City, and I received similar sentiments from councilors and town managers and staff from across the United States, and was, their hearts and thoughts were with us. And I went to this conference with that on my heart. What happened in our community was following things that were taking place. And just very sad for someone like myself who just worked with young men in the community, and to see what these young men had already accomplished, and the potential of what they were going to do with their lives. It's very, very sad. My prayers at this thought is with the families, and that they could, during this time of grieving, that they could lean on their support system, which I know the university and the communities have really reached out, that they just can lean on them during this time of, of, that, you know, this difficult time that they're going through. So, and it's had a couple other things. Mr. Mayor is, we also heard about the loss of former city manager Cole Hendricks, and he was someone that I knew many, many years when I first moved here in 91. I actually lived beside him when I was running a room, so got to know him for many years. He was a stalwart in the community, and just worked with him a few years, about a year and a half ago on a community project. And just to the end, he was always was looking, always was looking at what was best for the city and the community, and just a wonderful public servant, and we'll miss him dearly. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other councilors?
As you have said, as you have both said, peace be with those families, those friends, teachers, staff of UVA, students. Also, just as a community, I would like to thank our volunteer rescue squad, our fire department, our emergency responders, our police department who responded and were there for the community, our emergency room workers. I remember seeing notifications from various people, and I know people in our emergency services are trained as best they can be for tragedies, but no one ever trains a human being fully. And I would like to thank those who were there to help our community.
Anybody else?
Just a second. What others have said, better than I'm going to be able to say it. I work at the university, and I'm a graduate of the university, and just the fact that that happened on grounds, you know, it is a sad, it's a time to grieve and to mourn for the lives lost. And, but I was also grateful to see the community response, and the response on grounds of turning this from not just a tragedy, but a celebration of these lives. And so those are the thoughts that I have right now. And I also agree with Counselor McGill and her comments about first responders and so forth, and the work that they did this week.
The only other comment I wanted to make, just to follow up on something that Vice Mayor Wade mentioned, is the death of Cole Hendricks. Cole was a real visionary, and one of the things that I've always, I think our community is deeply indebted to him, because he was not only thinking about the next budget, the next year, the next two years, he was thinking 20 years down the road. He was looking at things like the revenue sharing agreement, the planning agreement, the joint planning between city, county, and university, the Rivana Water and Sewer Authority, the Rivana Solid Waste Authority, the Airport Authority, all of these things. Charlottesville's infrastructure today is what it is. The downtown mall, of course. Charlottesville's infrastructure is what it is today because of things that Cole did 30 years ago, 40 years ago even, 50 years ago. He was a great public servant, and we're very much indebted to him and to his forward thinking, and I hope we can get back to thinking that far ahead in our comprehensive planning from here on out. Any other comments, and we'll move on. Okay. Other announcements, I just wanted to make sure that people remembered the grand illumination on December 2nd. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 on the downtown mall with the Christmas tree lighting at roughly 7:30, so y'all come.
I'd like to make an announcement if I could. So the Friends of Downtown Seaville, tomorrow, they are having a 10 o'clock in the morning, the Magic on the Mall Holiday Event Series, they're kicking off. So there will be a number of events. You can check out their website, Friends of Downtown Seaville. Should be some really good, fun times. The Holly Trolley will be going on, which I'm looking forward to that.
So, as we're getting into the swing of the holiday season, any other announcements? Okay. Next item on the agenda is recognitions and proclamations. There is one proclamation that is not actually on the agenda, but we've agreed to, is Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month. Whereas November is Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month, this declaration of November being Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month honors the traditions, experiences, and rich histories of America's indigenous peoples who built North America's first civilizations. And whereas the month is a time to learn about and to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories, and to acknowledge the important contributions of native people, Heritage Month is also an opportune time to educate the general public about indigenous communities, to raise a general awareness about the unique challenges native people have faced, both historically and in the present, and in the ways in which tribal citizens have worked to conquer these challenges. And whereas in Charlottesville, we acknowledge the Monocan People as the indigenous custodians of the land on which Charlottesville was built, and we pay our respects to their elders, both past, present, and emerging. Whereas we also acknowledge that many of us never learned anything about the Monocan People in our elementary school classes about Virginia history, and that many of us know shamefully little about the history of how the settlers in Virginia in general, and in central Virginia in particular, interacted with native peoples. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council of the city of Charlottesville, I, Lloyd Snook, Mayor of the city of Charlottesville, recognize November 2022 as Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month, and call upon all of our residents to learn more about the history and heritage of the Monocan Nation, and to understand how their history and heritage are part of the fabric of our lives in Charlottesville. Signed and sealed this 21st day of November 2022. I guess we're next ready for the consent agenda. Ms. Thomas, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent agenda, number three, minutes, October 3rd meeting, four, resolution, appropriating insurance reimbursement in the amount of $4,650.55. Fire Department Truck Company, nine, second reading. Five, resolution, appropriating funds for 2022 Bureau of Justice Assistance, FY22 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant Program, local solicitation, $23,459, second reading. Six, resolution, appropriating funds from the Victim Witness Assistance Program Grant, $257,024, second reading. Seven, resolution, amending Community Development Block Grant, 2022-2023 Substantial Action Plan, $178,394.34, second reading. Eight, ordinance, amending Chapter 12 of the city code to require fire inspection reports, second reading. Nine, resolution, approving the appropriating, sorry, approving and appropriating grant funds for Virginia Department of Education Special Nutrition Program, Child and Adult Care Food Program, $50,000, one of two readings.
So, we'll now take public comment regarding items on the consent agenda that were just read by the clerk. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. In the Zoom webinar, you may select the raise hand option to be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined by phone and wish to speak on the consent agenda, you can press star nine, and we'll alternate between in-person and virtual speakers. Note, this is not the time for community matters that you would have registered for. That'll come in a few minutes. Is there anyone in council chambers who would like to speak on a consent agenda item? Seeing no one, are there any virtual speakers?
Mayor Snook, I see no raised hands.
All right. So, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from council? Ms. Thomas, you take the vote, please.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes five to nothing to adopt the consent agenda. Mr. Rogers, is there a report from the city manager's office?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of items. Earlier this year, Charlottesville was once again named to the Top 100 Best Places to Live in America list by livability.com. This year, the city came in at number 22. More than 2,000 cities were ranked on 50 data points measuring economics, housing, amenities, infrastructure, demographics, social and civic capital, education, and healthcare. Copies of the 2022 Livability Magazine featuring Charlottesville and the central Virginia area are available to you on the dais tonight. Additional copies are available in the Office of Economic Development. Thank you, Helen Carleton and her organization, the Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development, for their support and sponsorship of this effort. Council, I would like to take this opportunity as well to welcome the newest members of the Charlottesville Police Department. The officers graduated from the 146 Basic Law Enforcement Academy at Central Shenandoah Criminal Justice Training Academy on November 17th. Our new officers are Samia Headley, London O'Brien, Catherine Payne, and Travis Wood. Catherine Payne, and Travis Wood. We are pleased to welcome them to the Charlottesville family. I would also like to acknowledge the promotion of Jamie Valencia as the new Deputy Director for Human Resources. Jamie had been in the department for some time and she's now stepped up to give, give assistance to Mary Ann Hardy, our new Human Resource Director. At our four o'clock session, we heard a report on the results of our employee survey, the first such survey since 2017. We recognized lower scores on morale of employees and identified issues that affect the desirability as a place to work. We will post the results on the Human Resources website and webpage and department heads will be given results of their departments. The objective is to improve employee morale, address and address issues of concern. Along with Human Resources, the City Manager's Office will organize a series of employee work groups to solicit suggestions on how to improve our work environment. The work of these groups will be rolled into our strategic planning process. As I referred to earlier, we are beginning that process. We will select a strategic planning consulting within, within the next week. To the citizens of Charlottesville, please help us shape the future of Charlottesville. The City of Charlottesville has partnered once again with Pollco to gather feedback from our community through the 2022 Charlottesville Community Survey. The last time the survey was administered was 2018. The survey has two phases. The first phase is a random sampling of the community who will receive a personalized link or a paper survey to complete. The random sampling is very important for proper data collection. So if your household receives one of these surveys, we would be most thankful if you felt comfortable responding. Only Pollco will see any raw data from the submissions of, of online surveys as well as paper surveys. It is all confidential and the company will not share any identifying information with the city. The second phase of the community survey, an online portal, will be open for all members of the community to provide their input. If you have received a survey request, please know that the note should not be assigned by me and this is a safe and valid survey to take. I would like to thank each of you in advance for helping to get the pulse of our community. To ensure our community has an opportunity to engage, I would like to announce that the Police Civilian Oversight Board will be hosting a public forum with candidates for police chief who become finalists in this process. The forum will be held at Carver Recreation Center on Monday, November 18th, November 28th, from 6 to 8 p.m. The community is invited to join the PCOB in person, but seating is limited. The forum will also be streamed to ensure that anyone in our community has comfortable access to the forum, given that we are now in flu and RSV season along with continuing the impact of COVID infections. The PCOB welcomes the community to email them directly with questions that they may wish to have asked of the candidates at the forum. The PCOB will then work to select key questions, given the time and constraints of the event from those submissions. If you have an interview focused question for the potential candidates, please email your questions to PCOB@charlottesville.gov. Again, that's PCOB@charlottesville.gov. You also may call the PCOB office phone to leave a voice message with your question if you do not have internet access. The number is 434-970-3794. The phone will be checked periodically for messages. If you are a member of the community, we can encourage you to provide that information when you ask the question so that we can prioritize questions for those who live, work and play in the City of Charlottesville. That concludes my announcements and comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. So now it's time for community matters. We have two pre-registered speakers, leaving 14 slots for additional speakers on community matters. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak and we will now open up the floor to pre-registered speakers. Are there any of our pre-registered speakers available?
Yes, Mayor Snook, Helen Cawthon will be our first speaker.
Great, thank you. Ms. Cawthon?
You are on with council.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Helen Cawthon, President of the Central Virginia Partnership, which is a nonprofit, public-private partnership that serves as the Regional Economic Development Organization for Charlottesville and eight counties. We are very glad to have the city as part of CD-PED's collaboration and thank you very much for your generous support. We also thank Chris Engel for his service on our Board of Directors. Our program of work has three main aspects, marketing, regional collaboration, including serving as a support organization for Virginia Career Works Piedmont Region, as well as Go Virginia Region 9 Council, and a new talent retention initiative that I'd like to speak to you about tonight. As you know, many of your employers simply cannot find the talent they need. CD-PED has undertaken a new talent retention initiative to help fill open jobs so our employers can remain and grow in the city and in our region. In September, we received a two-year Go Virginia matching grant for a tech talent retention initiative. We've already hired a new talent director and three UVA interns to promote jobs in our region to UVA and community college students. Called Tech Link Central Virginia, the goal is to have students who graduate start their careers here in Charlottesville and other parts of the region and fill open tech jobs to benefit our employers. We have a new website called livingcentralva.org. I encourage you to look at it. Charlottesville has its own page and we can change that easily. So if you take a look at it and see anything you'd like to add or change, we're glad to do that. In the work section, we highlight our target markets like IT and light manufacturing, include videos showcasing some of the companies. You can click on any of the company logos you see and go right to that company's website or career page, whichever they have, and we have a find a job feature on that site. As Mr. Rogers mentioned, we put together the Livability Central Virginia Magazine, promoting Charlottesville and the region, so it's our entire nine localities. What we're excited about is we think that's a nice piece that tells the story of live, work and playing in central Virginia. Again, we will hope to do that two more times. So if you see anything you'd like changed or have ideas for the future issue, we're glad to do that. It's in digital form as well, so you may see, start seeing that pop up on some folks' websites. I also want to mention that we're collaborating on two grants pertaining to internships. BCW Piedmont has a Talent Supply Connector Grant, focused on internships and light manufacturing and food and beverage for community college and high school students. And UVA is partnering with BCW Piedmont on a Shev Grant for UVA, community college and high school students. So thank you all very much for your support. Just wanted to brief you on this and glad to answer any questions and Chris Engel is pretty familiar with it as well.
Thank you, Ms. Cawthon.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Little with us?
Mayor Snook, I do not see Emily on the Zoom.
Is Emily Little here? Okay. So is there anybody present who would like to speak on community matters? Yes, sir. Come on up. Come to the microphone. Take it off while you're speaking to us, it'd be great. Identify yourself, please, and tell us where you live.
My name's Khalil Reed. I live at 208 Fairway Avenue and I have, first of all, I have a statement to make.
Okay.
And then I have a question. Well, the statement is like, too often the, I ask officers for, what's it called, cards? For their name cards because of my relationship with a lot of them. A lot of them are nice, but some of them are not nice and I feel that sometimes instead of focusing only, I'm not saying you, but focusing on the tourist a lot is, sometimes it needs to be focused more on stuff like that, like giving officers more cards for the community and basically like more activities with the officers and, you know, like a bigger support, bigger focus on the civilian review report than, you know, more hotels. I'm not saying you're, you're at fault for that. It was the other city council members, but basically I'm saying that. But I also have to say that, also, I need to ask a question later on, but basically I, um, there's just a lot of officers that get burnt out and there's a lot of officers that are not very nice. Majority of the ones here are nice, but a lot of them aren't.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
So is there anyone else present who would like to address council? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is James Groves and I'm a city resident here to extend upon my recent comments regarding Charlottesville's natural gas subsidies. The city currently provides hundreds of thousands of dollars each year in support of fossil fuel, infrastructure expansion and greenhouse gas emissions growth by offering free gas line installations and rebates for tankless gas water heaters. After my earlier comments, I wanted to know when the gas line subsidy began. A little research showed that it was adopted by City Council in 1979. Why? And what had the code said before? A bit more digging revealed that from 1959 until 79, the code had stated this about gas line installations. Quote, "All service pipes from the property line to the location of the meter shall be installed at the expense of the owner or consumer," unquote. Thus, prior to 1979, if you wanted gas installed in Charlottesville, you paid for it. So why did City Council introduce a subsidy? Think back to the 70s. In 1973, the US experienced a significant shock to its energy supply from the Arab oil embargo. That seminal event drove home our dependence upon foreign oil. Then, in 1977, President Jimmy Carter began urging our nation to reshape its energy habits. City Council must have wanted to help, recognizing that at the time, nearly half of all Virginia homes were heated with fuel, oil and other petroleum products. So to draw us away from oil, council acted. Today, less than 5% of Virginia homes are heated with petroleum products. This century, we have different energy concerns. Our number one energy issue is climate change driven by the burning of fossil fuels. Like President Carter, President Biden speaks repeatedly about the need for an energy transition, even calling for an end to fossil fuel subsidies. Given that we have a climate emergency, that our president is asking us to change and that young people already living in our community will bear the brunt of continued inaction, shouldn't you follow in the footsteps of your city council predecessors and make a change? They introduced the proposed gas subsidy revision on a Monday and passed that code revision three days later. Are you able to respond with similar speed? Our world is on fire. Please help put out that fire by eliminating the subsidies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Groves. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak? Anybody else online who would like to address council?
Mayor Snook, we have Andy Orban.
All right, Mr. Orban?
You are on with council.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'm calling about our, our streets and our sidewalks. A while back, I presented a petition and a concept for protected bike lanes along West Main Street and now I'd like to hear from, from you all what kind of progress has been made internally to evaluate the proposal and see if there's any idea of, you know, moving ahead or any timeline for that. It's something that, you know, every day, you know, I have a daughter that's at Buford's, so I'm on West Main regularly and see every day, you know, delivery vehicles and cars and things blocking the bike lanes and it's just, you know, not a safe condition. So I really would like to see some attention given to safe biking. And the other sidewalk issue I'd like to raise is the East High Street, where there is a proposed section of sidewalk that was to be put in in front of the AT&amp;T property and there was a interest in, in moving that ahead from the city engineer, but the most recent response from Public Works was that this was not going to be built. So I'd like to have some clarification on, you know, is the sidewalk going to get put in soon or not? So those are the two things I wanted to have a follow-up from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orban. Anybody else?
Mayor Snook, we have Robin Hoffman.
All right, Ms. Hoffman?
You are on with council.
Hi, everybody. Thank you very much for acknowledging the deaths of our students at UVA and also I wanted to add that that was my first football game that weekend because I attend the alumni seminar with some really wonderful Maverick Lees that were at the table with me, gave me the ticket and I'm so, I'm embarrassed to say it's the first football game I ever attended because I got the ticket from them, but afterward we, well, all I want to say is that, you know, this is about guns too and that there used to be an ordinance, I think. Chief Brackney was able to keep people with guns out in August of 17th, 2018, using state and federal folks to support her. I was wondering if we could do the same somehow and reinstate ordinances or whatever, signage, something like that. Also, I want to announce that I'm been asked to be at the table at the Grand Illumination. I will be making, I hope, holiday cards for people. So when I speak with them, when they come to the table, I will do their caricature so that they can have holiday cards for their families and hopefully some of them send them to me. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Is there anybody else online?
Yes, Mayor Snook, we have Kate Fraley.
Ms. Fraley?
You are on with council.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Kate Fraley. I live in Charlottesville and I'm going to send you an email after I finish this with backup material and articles listed. No parent should have to bury their child. We must do what we can to prevent that. Please don't be tempted to increase the police responsibility. Please don't be tempted to increase the police responsibility or the police budget in the wake of six people dying from gunshot wounds since September. Increasing budgets doesn't lower crime. Police don't keep us safe. They show up after the fact, and even when they have a heads up in advance, they don't prevent violence. Their job isn't prevention. What works is to treat violence as a health problem, like an epidemic. Cure violence programs treat violence as contagious and intervene with programs. Here's a quote, "When a person commits a violent act, it isn't their first experience with violence. There is no one answer. In addition to known programs that help decrease violence, we must experiment and listen to the people most closely impacted. Ask the buckswad what is needed and do it. Ask peace in the streets. Ask the students what is needed and do it. Support programs that already exist to provide community behavioral health service include not only Region Ten S, CSB programs, but also programs outside the control of the CSB. Support new programs based on what works in other places. Target high-crime neighborhoods not with surveillance but with resources. Support funds to train and educate more behavioral health workers from peer recovery specialists to PhD-prepared professionals. There is no one answer. Efforts must be varied and community-driven." One second here. Resources must be put into communities for wraparound services before violence is committed and afterwards. Again, no parent should have to bury their child. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fraley. Is there another speaker?
Next up, Mayor Snook, we have Ange Khan.
Ms. Khan?
You are on with council.
Thanks. Um, I attempted to reach, uh, you all, uh, this past week in regarding opening up a, uh, community, uh, area for folks who are unsheltered, homeless folks that are in the area, um, that one who are like banned from prop, um, banned from the shelter, uh, options that are currently available. Um, I did not get a response. It's going to be twenty-five degrees tonight, twenty-five. Um, and you all are just like, fuck it, we're not going to, to do anything about them because they serve no purpose, is your thought process, right? Like, these human beings do not deserve X, Y, and Z. Um, they absolutely deserve, uh, shelter. And that's the bare minimum. They deserve housing. Um, I see you all not doing much in that regard, um, and not really caring about, again, their safety. Um, this is a vulnerable population. One person almost died. I'm also speaking in my individual capacity at the moment. So I just want to put that on record. Um, but one person almost died because they could not get into shelter. And they were in the hospital for three to four days due to their conditions outside. Okay? Like, I, I am challenging you all on this day to go and sleep in a public park on the coldest night of the year, sleep in your car. Well, and with, without the, you know, without the engine turned on because of, you know, you, you want to actually experience what it's like for at least six to eight hours. Go sleep in a congregate shelter. Go sleep at the Salvation Army. See what it's like for the unhoused population in this community. You are not doing good work. You are not. And I don't know how you can sit here and say Charlottesville is a, oh, one of the best places to live. For who? For who? Because it damn sure ain't unhoused people, people of low wealth, people who have been historically under-resourced. It is not a good community to live in. It is not a good community to live in when you are continuously saturating the police budget, when you have people outside sleeping on the street. It is not. So do not congratulate yourselves. You are not even doing the bare minimum.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Is there another speaker online?
Yes, Mayor Snook, we have Don Gathers.
Mr. Gathers?
You are on with council. And you will need to unmute.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Hope that everyone has a safe and, uh, blessed holiday. Just a couple of things real quick. And I don't know, maybe this has already been discussed. We have got to do a better job of notification of citizens when there is a perilous, uh, situation that, uh, that, that affects our community. Especially if the, if, uh, the individual who perpetrated that, that situation is still at large. We have got to do a better job of letting your citizens know, um, to take shelter, to, to be on guard, to be alert. In that same vein, I understand that you all have put a policy in place as in to regards to, uh, employees participating in, uh, various acts, um, and let's just call it what it is, the insurrection, the tyranny, the treasonous act that one of the city employees participated in. You all, you, all of you, uh, Mr. Rogers and council, you all dropped the ball on that situation. Uh, if Mr. Rogers was not willing to, to act to remove that individual, then council should have instructed him to do so. So you all are complicit in, in that. And now we have the, uh, the, uh, the leader of that particular regime that the individual was following now announcing his candidacy for presidency once again. There is no telling what we'll face in the, the weeks and months ahead. But to have that, that sort of, um, that sort of employee on your staff does not set a good example. It puts others in peril. And God forbid, we've certainly seen what happens when the ugliness that, that, that is white supremacy rears its ugly head here in Charlottesville. It's time to take concrete and, and definitive steps to prevent this from happening again as opposed to reacting to it happening. So, you know, I applaud you for, for, for doing something, but as the previous speaker just spoke, you're not doing enough. So, thank you, and again, hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Gathers. Anybody else online?
Yes, Mayor Snook, we have Jeanette Abinater.
Ms. Abinater?
You are on with council.
Mayor Snook, Vice Mayor Wade, um, city manager and council, thank you for, um, giving a moment to speak. I'm Jeanette Abinater, co-executive director with Richard Morris of Cultivate Charlottesville. Um, just want to take a breath. The two previous speakers who spoke very powerfully about the wrenching situations in front of us and the moment of silence that you all provided at the beginning of the meeting. Um, thank you for recognizing the reverberations of some of those acts of violence. I just wanted, I'm here today to, um, our Food Equity Initiative partnership with city council. Our report is part of, um, today's agenda, and while we're not giving a formal presentation, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for this continued partnership that amplifies and brings focus to food equity in our city and moving towards, you know, creating policies and practices that move us from this foodie city that, um, you know, gets a lot of recognition, um, but that might not serve everyone equally to a food equity city. So thank you for that partnership. Our report, which is in the packet and on our website, highlights some of the, um, efforts over the past year of both the Food Justice Network and the, um, many of our partners who have collaborated. And I just wanted to highlight a few. First of all, we have, um, a new staff team, and I just, on behalf of Onua, um, Christopher and Quintia Taylor, who are our new, um, Food Justice Network staff team. I hope you have an opportunity to meet and work with them. Um, over the past year, we pivoted from a lot of the, um, emergency COVID responses that we had done during the previous two and a half years to really focus back on our core work of implementation around the Food Equity Initiative policy platform, um, specifically around urban agriculture efforts. Um, we also have represented the city at several regional, national, and local, uh, forums where the city of Charlottesville and our partner, our public-private partnership together has been getting a lot of, um, attention and has been used as a model in various places. So, um, much appreciation for that. Um, yeah, I think that's basically it. I just wanted to say thank you. I wanted to say we look forward to the year ahead and working more closely with city departments again as, uh, helping them implement each of their individual food equity goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abinater. Do we have another speaker online?
Mayor Snook, we have one more raised hand at the moment. Katrina Turner.
All right, Ms. Turner?
You are on with council.
Good evening. Um, I just want to say shame on all of y'all for not doing anything with Allen Grove. Shame on every last one of you all, okay? And to Mr. Rogers, I'd like to know what apology Mr. Grove gave to this community? Why are you the only one that the apology was given to? I'd like to hear the apology he gave to this community. Okay, how many shootings have there been in Charlottesville? How many of those shootings has the ca, has the shooter been caught? Has every last shooter here in Charlottesville been caught? No, because I know families who have moved out of their house because of shootings that have occurred to their family members. I know people who live in Charlottesville who are scared because the shooter has not been caught. When has this community been closed down because the shooter has not been caught? Okay? I just want to tell you that people in the community feel that the community members in Charlottesville mean nothing. Okay, this is what someone told me, that the football players were somebody. But the people in Charlottesville who were shot, who are still scared for their life, who are still living with bullets in their body. I was told these people mean nothing because they are not connected to UVA. What kind of crap is that to say about the community members in Charlottesville? It's like UVA and Charlottesville are a thousand miles apart. This is ridiculous. Where are all the I'm sorrys or the memorials for the people who have been shot in Charlottesville? Where is all of the concern for the family of Charlottesville? Oh, and by the way, you said, you know, everybody is connected to Charlottesville, to UVA one way or another? I'm gonna tell you how I'm connected. Because when my son, when UVA made a mistake and cost my son his life, and I finally got a lawyer, guess what happened? A UVA student went missing, and the lawyer I had to finally try to get what my son deserved, dropped me because of a UVA student going missing. So, yes, we all do have connections with UVA, and that's my connection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Is there another speaker online?
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
All right, so that was our final speaker for community matters. There will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. We'll now move on to the action items portion of the agenda. First of which is a resolution extending the due date for payment of second-half local taxes. Jason Vandiver to present. Mr. Vandiver?
Yes, uh, first of all, thank you for considering this item on your agenda. I appreciate your willingness, uh, to act on this. Um, it's a pretty straightforward resolution. Uh, what you have before you is a request to extend the due date for second-half local taxes, uh, which includes real estate and personal property taxes that normally would be due on December fifth. So as routine as, uh, the billing and mailing of tax bills might seem, uh, we did run into some challenges this year with our third-party print vendor, uh, that were pretty extraordinary. Um, so you may have noticed that bills did get mailed last week. Uh, from what I can tell, taxpayers started receiving both personal property and real estate around Wednesday or Thursday. And while the state code, uh, stipulates that we are required to mail tax bills at least fourteen days before the due date, uh, we've always had a practice in Charlottesville of trying to mail those out at least thirty days before the due date. So, uh, obviously with December fifth quickly approaching, um, we felt like it might be prudent to, uh, request just a two-week extension to give taxpayers more time to receive those bills and pay them in a timely manner. So, uh, with that, I will, um, turn it over to see if you have any questions. But, um, there, there's a resolution available, uh, for you that I hope you can support, uh, which provide, uh, an extension from December fifth to December nineteenth for the second-half due date.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions, councilors?
No.
Any other discussion? Somebody want to make a motion?
So it's a first reading?
There's one reading.
I would move to approve a resolution to extend the deadline for payment of real estate, tangible personal property, and machinery and tools tax payments from December fifth, two thousand twenty-two to December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Thomas, take the vote, please.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
And motion passes five-nothing. Thank you, Mr. Vandiver. Uh, next resolution approving the appointment of an emergency management coordinator. Mr. Sanders?
Good evening, council. Uh, the item before you is the, um, uh, action we, we actually slipped up a little bit and got ahead of ourselves. On October twelfth, Mr. Rogers, uh, announced the selection of Jeremy Evans to serve as the city's first emergency management coordinator. And at that time, we were not aware that we needed to bring that, uh, individual before you for appointment, uh, because we had never done it before. So, uh, we were looking up some information and found that that needed to be done. So this is the correction of that particular item. Uh, as the director of emergency management, Mr. Rogers is presenting this iteration. Uh, Jeremy Evans, uh, has significant credentials for this particular role. He holds an MPA in public policy and public administration and a BA in emergency management. He has served with the Charlottesville Fire Department since two thousand and six, having most recently been an assistant fire marshal. He also worked, um, with the Roanoke City, uh, Fire and EMS, uh, from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and six, and served in the Virginia Air National Guard as well as the Virginia Army National Guard. And all of those, we, we definitely feel as though, uh, contributed to him being the best candidate. And he, uh, went through an interview process and was selected for this position of emergency management coordinator. Uh, he is in, uh, the fire department from a personnel standpoint. So he was promoted to the rank of battalion chief as a part of this particular assignment. He will report to the city manager, who serves as the director of emergency management and the director of public safety. Uh, but this function is included in the operations portfolio that I oversee. So we will be working closely to, uh, build out the framework for the city, uh, emergency management plan. Uh, Jeremy stepped up this summer during our transition. And one of the key things he delivered was the continuity operations plan. He's currently developing a budget for the area and formulating the city's operations plan. Uh, so there are a number of things that we will continue to work on. But the key thing for you all, uh, at this moment is it was important that we move on the delivery of this position as soon as possible. This was on the post-two thousand seventeen list of things to be done. This was on the post-2017 list of things to be done. It has been delayed for quite some time, and we thought it was important to be done as soon as we could, and we brought that forward. We're using uh salary savings for the initial operations uh to bridge to the start of FY24, where the uh the office will, this this function will be included in the city manager's budget. Uh, but I will be coming to you at the end uh with, for the FY22 surplus, asking for a bridge amount of funds that would get us from January to June to support basic operations. Uh, so as you see, Mr. Evans is here with us. If there are any questions that you may have for him, you can feel free to do so. Otherwise, we have submitted him for your approval as the city's first emergency management coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any any questions, either for Mr. Sanders or for Mr. Evans?
Uh, yeah, just welcome aboard. Glad to have you here. Are you able to say, just to put you on the spot, just a sentence or two, a a couple thoughts about how you see the the first year going for you, the first six months, in terms of priorities you'd have?
Yes, sir. Uh, thanks for having me on this evening. I'm happy to serve the citizens of Charlottesville and the city. Uh, some of the things that I'm working on currently is the emergency operations plan uh that's going to be a rewrite. Since we're a new department, um we are um just reevaluating the documents that we have on file currently, and I thought it'd be a good time to do a rewrite uh now that we have stood this department up. Uh, like Mr. Sanders has said, that I I've started with the the coop, uh the continuity of operations earlier this summer. We've got that completed. Uh, we also have um ongoing training with VOC, uh we're working with city staff this ye- this upcoming year to ensure that everyone uh understands their role during an emergency. So that's kind of how my first year looks, is is making sure that we are all on the same page and that we can all coordinate our resources.
Are you, I'm assuming you you'll, you probably already have a whole range of contacts with people over at the university and in the county and the general region, or those conversations you're having with with folks there to just kind of, this past week was was a hard one, but I guess going forward, are there conversations you're having about, you know, how to strengthen those ties and how to work better together?
Yes, sir. We we are trying to um meet once a month anyway, the local emergency managers in the area, and following an an internal after-action review, uh we've just looked at some areas from improvement from our standpoint, and uh but I am definitely in contact with the university and our county partners.
Good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just just to follow up on that a little bit, and I I don't, I I sort of feel a little bit, a little bit guilty about starting off our first encounter with you with this question, but uh there, I've gotten a lot of calls and emails and so on from people who are concerned about the fact that they didn't hear about the shooting until much, they would say, much too late. Do you know what the what the chronology, were you involved at all in the emergency communications aspect of what was going on last Sunday night?
Uh, I I can't speak to the specifics of the chronological, how the event unfolded and why we didn't get notifications sooner. Uh, I will tell you that we spoke about it earlier in a meeting um just this week about some improvements on our side and just to understand that, you know, uh to be a little more aware of our response partners' needs and be be ready and available when they do call us.
Personally, I I I saw, and I was getting all kinds of things on Facebook that I just didn't understand what they were referring to, and the first communication I actually had was at 3:54 AM from the president of the university, a mass email that was sent out. And then the first time that I became aware that the city government was responding in some way was a 5:00 AM phone call from Joe Platania. Uh, I frankly don't know what the, I mean, I I've gotten calls from neighbors saying, why wasn't anything sent out via email or text or whatever the the preferred method might be? And I hope that we can figure out a way to make sure that we have the best possible emergency communication so that people don't end up saying, why didn't anybody tell me?
Absolutely. We're working hard to improve uh within our our region um and communications among our response partners, and I'm looking really hard into our communications policies.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments, discussion? If not, we need a motion.
I can find it here. Second? All right, so I move to ratify and consent to the city manager's appointment of a coordinator of emergency management.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? If not, then Ms. Thomas, will you take the vote, please?
I do have a question, and maybe Ms. Robertson can answer whether we need to include the name in that resolution.
I'm happy to restate it with a name, if that helps.
I'll do whatever. I just needed to have clarification before I sign my name to it.
Yes, I I would advise that putting the name in would would be optimal. We just um
Great.
Didn't do that before the agenda materials were due.
Okay.
Okay.
So adding Jeremy Evans' name to the resolution, just
Yes.
Just read.
Yeah, and I, if you accept that, um
I accept that amendment.
And I accept the friendly amendment to your, to the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been seconded, including Mr. Evans' name.
Yes. Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
All right, that passes five nothing. Thank you and congratulations, Mr. Evans. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
So the next item is a second reading on amending the human rights ordinance. Todd Niemeyer, it's Mr. Niem- there you go. And uh just to bring everybody back up to speed, we had large, to a large extent, agreement last time, but there were a bunch of sort of typos and little changes here and there, and people just didn't feel comfortable in going ahead with the, just saying, oh, don't worry, we'll put the edits in later. So now the edits are in. I will tell you, as the one who was probably inspiring most of those uh changes and edits, that I've looked through what you've got, and you've solved my problems, so I'm good with it. So, anyway. Any other discussion you want to present to us, Mr. Niemeyer?
No, thank you, Mayor Snook. Uh, not not anything new to bring up. I do believe uh the chair of the commission also sent you a letter endorsing
Yes, she did.
The ordinance as written, so I have nothing new to present. Uh, if you have any further questions, please let me know.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Niemeyer or anybody else?
No.
I don't either. I think it's pretty straightforward and good for our ability to enforce for housing law violations.
Okay.
All right. Ready for a
Anyone make a motion?
Yes, I move the ordinance amending and reenacting Chapter 2, Article 15 of the Charlottesville City Code to expand the duties of the Human Rights Commission in relation to enforcement of laws that prohibit housing discrimination. Second?
Okay, and that is to include the edits that have been made since the the first presentation?
To include the edits that have been made since the first presentation.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
And motion passes five nothing. Thank you, Mr. Niemeyer.
Thanks much.
Okay, next item on our agenda, General Business is a report on the Food Equity Initiative Annual Report of FY22, a written report. Um, we don't, we're not planning to have any public discussion of it particularly, but it's been given to us and received, and I've read it, and it's it's quite a report, I'll say that. Doing a lot of good work. Any other business items for consideration? Nope. Councilors, any questions for city management to follow up on?
Yeah, I will say one thing about the West Main Protected Bike Path um that Mr. Orbin spoke to earlier. If there's a way we could get some kind of um, I don't know, statement or something out to the community in terms of um the West Main uh Protected Bike Way that they're talking about, using sort of a temporary uh low-cost option for that. I know that we're working on a whole range of lists of priorities for 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 things, and I I realize that's probably somewhere midway in that list, but um I think, you know, if we could get some sort of update, maybe next next time we are together in terms of where we stand on that long list of sidewalk improvements and uh, yeah, thank you.
Well, if we either by the next meeting or the next meeting, because I do want to honor that staff will be gone for a number of days due to the holidays, um and I really don't want to be pushing our staff um to take time away from their families.
I completely agree, yeah. So if it's the week after that, that'd be fine, too.
Any other comments, other issues to bring up right now? Did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I'm on the Charlottesville Albemarle Tourism and Tourism and Visitors Board. I may have gotten that mixed up. We're working on
Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Yes, we're working on that name. We definitely want to shorten
CACBB.
Yes, and um and the the director there, Courtney Caucasian, she she has offered her expertise and her staff to help the city, and I'm sure the county as well, with any type of messaging and outreach that needs to be done in wake of the um the events. Um, they, that's what they do, um support and promote the our area, so I just wanted to let uh Mr. Rogers and his staff know that that expertise is available should should you need it. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no nothing else right now, we're now at the final speaking opportunity for members of the public. Speakers will be given up to three minutes. You may join the speaker queue by selecting the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar or by pressing star nine if you have joined by phone, or by raising your hand if you're in council chambers. Um, we'll alternate between in-person and virtual speakers. Any speakers here? Nope, not here. Anybody online wishing to speak to us?
Mayor Snook, there is one raised hand at the moment. Katrina Turner is back with us.
All right, Ms. Turner?
You are on with counsel. And you are, you will need to unmute.
I'm sorry, my, I must have hit it by mistake.
Okay, so
So she was sorry?
She does not wish to speak to us again? Okay. All right, well
I have, I'm sorry, I have another hand raised, and Khan is back.
All right, Ms. Khan?
You are on with counsel.
Uh, yes, um, so at the last city council meeting, I filled out a, you know, a registration form, and I was, I know there's a lot of other things that are far more important, but I wanted to bring this up um at this moment. Um, there was a registration form online, I'm not sure if it's available now, to attend um city council meetings and also, like, I believe the Zoom meeting, um where it asks for, like, organizations, what role your organization is, and uh and, you know, for a person who doesn't, who isn't connected to a specific organization, nonprofit, um or otherwise, or a business in general, um, you know, that form was pretty uh laced with barriers, is what I'm going to say. It was just really uh barrier-heavy. So I'm wondering if you all are aware that that form was online and can uh be um a preventive measure for folks to access uh public meetings. Um, also, I did want to bring up one thing about, um, I know you talked about, like, safety and infrastructure, and um you do all realize that you still have um a white supremacist insurrectionist uh on your payroll. Um, and if you're talking about keeping uh the city safe, um you could start there, especially having access to the emergency response system, uh that is uh, that that is a safety concern. So I just wanted to highlight those things. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Anyone else?
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
All right, so we will close the final Community Matters section, and there's nothing left on our agenda, except adjournment. Thank you all so much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Whatever you celebrate.